Public hearing on Assembly Bill 645, 644, 646, and 675. And joint hearing with the Senate Aide Committee is called to order. And at this time, the Assembly Clerk will take roll call.
Don't tell members to silence any cell phones.
A few announcements before we do the roll call. I want to welcome everyone here today. And if you want to speak or register, there are slips for you to fill out and give to the messenger, and he'll bring them up, or they'll bring them up to us. And then please silence your phones, cell phones, or electronic devices. It has happened that it's gone off, and we've threatened to make them bring donuts for the next hearing. So with that...
(laughing).
Does it? Okay. So, okay. Senator, this time, we'll have the Assembly Clerk take roll call.
All right. Representatives Nielsen...
Here.
Novak...
Here.
Talkin...
Here.
Alott...
Here.
Bernier...
Here.
Rip...
Here.
Tranel...
No, he's going to be late. He's going to be a little late.
He's going to be a little bit late coming and going at meetings. Brooks, Ed Brooks. Okay. Kitchens...
Here.
Vandermeer...
Here.
Dana...
Here.
Jorgensen...
Here.
Goiki...
Here.
Kessler...
Here.
And Considine.
Here.
All right, we have everyone present except Representative Tranel coming and going.
There are a number of meetings going on today, so you will be seeing people coming and going probably for the remainder of the committee hearing. So, now, Senator?
Well, good morning, and I'm kind of excited. I think this is my first joint hearing with the Assembly, and it's great to see some of the representatives here, though I don't get an opportunity to see too often. So at this time, the Senate Chief Clerk will call the roll for the Senate Committee.
Senator Moulton...
Here.
Senator Tiffany...
Here.
Senator Horstorf...
Here.
Senator Petrowski...
Here.
Senator Lemahue... Senator Veenhout...
Here.
Senator Urbanbach...
Here.
Senator Hanson... Senator Taylor.
And we are ready to go. Ready to go.
All right, at this time, we'll start with Assembly Bill 645 and Senate Bill 512. And Senator Moulton and myself will go up and testify, and I'll turn it over to the Vice Chair. So well now, your testimony on Assembly Bill 645, Senate Bill 512 relating to dairy plant and food processing plant licensing requirements and grant rulemaking authority. Sen...
Thank you, Committee Chair and members of the committee. I testify in support of Assembly Bill 645, which I have authored, and its companion bill, Senate Bill 512 authored by Senator Moulton. To give you a little background, in 2011, Wisconsin Act 195 created an exemption to dairy plant licensing requirements for food processors who made dairy-containing foods under certain conditions. However, consistent interpretation and enforcement of the 2011 Wisconsin Act 195 has proven to be difficult. Puddings, coffee drinks, dairy-containing alcohol beverages, and the like fall into a gray area of interpretation under current law. This legislation clarifies that a licensed food processing plant isn't also required to have a dairy processing license if it has processed, pasteurized, or otherwise treated dairy products into non-dairy products. I encourage you to support this legislation, which reduces the need for duplicate licenses and regulatory requirements. Food processing plants will be able to operate under clearer licensing guidelines while preserving the integrity of safe foods. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the opportunity to speak to you on this legislation. And I really don't have a lot to add to what Representative Nielsen said, but I would just point out that I recently had the opportunity to attend the State Agriculture Leader Summit in Denver, Colorado. And one of the things that came up there over and over again was the problem that the ag industry has with regulatory requirements. I would hope that we could all support this legislation.
Thank you. Are there any questions from any of the commanding members for the authors? Seeing none, we'll have John Petty from...
Actually, no.
Clerk here.
Clerk here. Steve Ingham from Department of Ag will be testifying in favor of this bill.
Am I on? Okay. As mentioned, my name is Steve Ingham. I am the Administrator of the Division of Food Safety at the Wisconsin Department of Ag Trade and Consumer Protection, and we're very much in favor of this bill. Assemblyman Narison gave a good synopsis of the background, how 2011 Wisconsin Act 195 had good intentions, that is, to reduce duplicative licensing for certain food processing plants making certain types of products. But the good intentions created a very difficult situation for our staff when they go out into plants, and there were these other types of products that had dairy ingredients in them, but we couldn't determine whether those were legally dairy products or food products. Now, if you're coming in from the outside, you say, well, why is that a big deal? In our world, what license somebody has really matters, and we are very cognizant of the fact that we don't want to overdo licensing. We don't want to pile on with duplicative licenses. So I think this bill goes a long way towards solving the unintended challenges that 2011 Wisconsin Act 195 created. So basically, what the bill does is defines what dairy-containing foods will be considered to be dairy products and thus have to be made, generally speaking, in a dairy plant, and which dairy-containing foods would not be considered dairy products. And those would generally have to be made in a food processing plant. The definition really gets into the weeds. It accounts for products that are made from milk from animals other than cows, goats, sheep, hoofed or camellid mammals. And it also deals with ingredients derived from those, what we would kind of consider unusual milk sources. The definition accounts for foods like yogurt, which anybody would say, yeah, that's a dairy product. Well, there's actually a federal standard of identity for that product, so it mentions that products with a standard of identity are dairy products. But it also accounts for foods that would be standard-of-identity products, except for the fact that the milk comes from an unusual animal. For example, if you had, and I'm making this up, if you had camel's milk yogurt, okay, that we think should be a dairy product, and that's how the bill is written. The definition also accounts for situations where you have a couple of different standard-of-identity dairy products, and you mix them together to make something new that doesn't have a standard of identity. So for example, if you took yogurt and cream cheese, both standard-of-identity products, mixed them together, threw in some spices, and you've got a dip, okay, we're going to say that's still a dairy product, or the bill says that. There's also a big section of the bill that, as mentioned by Assemblyman Narison, basically what it's trying to do is make sure that a food business that's doing something allowed by its main license isn't required to get an additional food processing plant license. So there's a very long list. I think it's about 10 or 12 items or types of activities that do not require an additional food processing plant license. So in summary, we're very much in favor of this bill. It makes our world easier. It allows us to give better service. It reduces the likelihood of duplicative licensing and regulatory requirements. Certain plants would find that they wouldn't have to have a dairy plant license anymore. Other plants, or retail food establishments, restaurants... Other plants, or retail food establishments, restaurants, and so forth, may find that they don't have to have a food processing plant license. So it has great potential in terms of reducing the licensing load, as you would, for those businesses. So we're very much in support of it, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that any of the joint committee has.
Representative Ott?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Steve, good to see you. I'm going to play really dumb on this, because I am really dumb on this, on how you, if you had two licenses before, use my hands, okay? You've done this, or you've picked and chosen, and when you've, if you had to, you had food safety concerns in both, right?
So...
And so food safety concerns have been interplayed, or what? Please help us understand it better, because as you said, we can get into the weeds. This is difficult. I don't want to over, but please help us understand it better.
Absolutely. I think, if, you correct me if I'm not following what you're getting at, but the bottom line is that food safety standards are not going to be decreased. And in situations where there are legitimately two licenses, our operating practice is that the more stringent regulation carries the day, because, you know, they may have a mix of products...
So if you have these two, this one is stronger, so that one's brought over to the one?
At least for the making of the product, on the one hand, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Really, the situation here, I mean, let's go back to the 2011 situation. It was a company that had a food processing plant license, and they were making battered, breaded, par-fried, mozzarella-cheese sticks. And, you know, under the rules at the, or the law at the time, that was a dairy product.
Needed two.
Yeah, so they had to get that second license.
Okay.
Now, they battered, breaded, and par-fried a bunch of things, you know, broccolis, you know, a bunch of stuff, types of things that weren't, clearly weren't dairy products. And they had a system, and it was running safely, and they felt, "Why should we have to get a dairy plant license and follow dairy plant rules for essentially the same type of process except it's a mozzarella-cheese stick?" Okay? And that's how that bill started, and the focus of it was that situation, okay? And inadvertently, you know, the way that was kind of laid out and defined, it made it hard for us when we went into the place making pudding, or frappuccinos, rum chata, you know, stuff like that, where it's, "Yeah, it's got dairy ingredients, but do we call it a dairy product? Do we need to?" You know, but so, bottom line, we're not going backwards on food safety standards.
Okay. If I could, just follow up, Mr. Chairman. So how many plants are we talking about? How many permits are we talking about?
You know, I don't really know.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I don't think it's a huge number, but, you know, we'll find out.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Are there any other questions for Steve, from any other members? Hearing none. Thank you. Registering in favor is Brian Dale from...
Dake.
Dake, I'm sorry. Wisconsin Independent Business.
John Umhafer.
John Umhafer, who's registered in favor with Wisconsin Cheesemakers Association.
Nick George.
Nick George, who's in favor with the Midwest Food Processing Association, and...
Oh, I'm good.
Yep, okay, good. So that'll conclude testimony on 645 and 512. Our second order business is Assembly Bill 644. We'll now hear testimony and welcome registration on that bill. This bill is relating to regulation of establishments where animals are slaughtered or meat is processed and granting rulemaking authority. Representative Nielsen?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It's going to be a little deja vu, or should I say Groundhog Day on these four bills, because it'll be the senator and I on all four of them, so thank you for your time. I testify in support of Assembly Bill 644, which I have authored, with its companion bill, Senate Bill 513 with Senator Moulton. We're authoring this legislation to modernize the statute pertaining to Wisconsin's small-scale specialty meat and poultry processing industry, which has changed dramatically in recent years. By updating terminology, aligning state statutes with federal requirements, and modernizing our licensing fee structure, Wisconsin meat producers will remain competitive and be able to expand into unique markets while ensuring a safe food supply. The Assembly Bill 644 aligns Wisconsin's meat inspection statutes with the federal requirements as required by the USDA's Cooperative Interstate Shipment Program. It also caps meat processors' license fees at the current level and requires that cap to send an annual fee based on the complexity and scale of a license holder's business, which will be more equitable for smaller establishments. It eliminates duplicative licenses for retail food establishments, which make certain meat products, such as pizzas, that are shipped hot for sale by nonprofit organizations, simplifies regulatory oversight, and reduces fees for slaughtering, processing, and shipping products from newly popular animal species, such as bison, alpacas, llamas, and rabbits. And it repeals the obsolete reference to county and local meat inspection, redundant language regarding the labeling of horse meat. The changes proposed in this bill are expected to result in reduced costs and less regulatory complexity. I encourage you to support this legislation, which keeps Wisconsin statutes up to date to ensure our growing meat processing industry continues to move forward. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Senator Moulton?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, you have my written testimony, but I just want to make a comment that, and I'm happy to work with Representative Nielsen on this issue. You know, Wisconsin sends a lot of sausage. We're known for sausage, and also cheese, and cheese curds out to many of the other states. But recently, I had an opportunity to go on a bow hunting trip to Kansas, and we had some private landowners that allowed us to hunt there. And so when I came back home, I visited a meat processor over in my district, in the district I represent, in Abbotsford, Ray's Old World Sausage. And I was amazed at how many orders that he had that were being shipped to other states in our country. And so anything that we can do to help that part of our economy is really good. And as long as we do it while maintaining high standards and streamlining the regulation, I certainly hope that we can all support that. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any questions from the committee members? Senator Harzdorff?
Just for further clarification, because I haven't, trying to get a handle on this. So we had an issue a few years ago where if you are a state-inspected plant, if you're federally inspected plant, you can ship across borders. We fixed that, correct?
And that's part of what this is. We did, we did pass a law so you could be state-inspected, but there's trouble with it working out the right way. That cap will be up to testify, and they'll get more into the meat of this bill.
Okay.
I think David's...
(laughing).
...intended.
Joke of the day.
I'll be here all week.
Joke of the day.
Joke of the day.
Okay, so I'll maybe just, I'll ask them their...
I think they'd have a better explanation for you on that.
Okay. Because I know that that was key, you know, we had meat processing wanting to sell brats, for example, over into Minnesota, and, you know, even though they were federally inspected, they still needed to be state-inspected. Didn't make any sense, so...
And this has got a little fix on it. It's been hard for them, I guess, to do it, so...
Okay.
They'll be able to answer.
All right. Look forward to their testimony. Thank you.
Representative Ott?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Senator Moulton, when you were at your meeting in Colorado, did they talk about what was going to happen now with the feds repealing the label of origin law?
Cool.
Or cool, right?
There was brief mention of that subject. Senator Harzdorff, maybe you can... I don't recall exactly what the discussion was.
It was seen as a very positive thing, that that was addressed and repealed.
And it's, there's no, and that cap might be able to answer if there's any interplay with that now, that that changes versus our inspection stuff.
They can answer that.
So, thank you.
And then, any other questions for committee members? Oh, I'm sorry. Representative Kessler?
I just wanted to make a comment, and that was the comment I noted in the newspapers, the, what I thought was the very decent conduct on the part of Johnsonville when its plant had to be shut down, and they chose to continue to pay their employees and keep them on the salary, having them do volunteer work in Watertown. I just think, boy, that's a good employer, and I think this is, might be the perfect occasion to commend the Johnsonville sausage people for what I thought was a very, very decent, humane way of treating their employees.
Any other questions from committee members? If not, we'll move on to Steve again from DACAP, who will testify on this bill.
Okay, again, Steve Ingham, DACAP, Division of Food Safety. I'm going to jumble the order a little bit of what I was going to talk about, because I'd like to address Senator Harzdorff's question. What she is referring to is the Cooperative Interstate Shipment Program, which has been in effect for two or three years now. And this is a program that allows state, product from certain state-inspected plants to be shipped interstate, just as if it was from a USDA plant. USDA plant would be like Johnsonville. We're one of four states that is in that program, and we have now 10 plants in it, and we hope to get more. So it's up and running. What the bill does in relation to that CIS program is currently in statute, there's a section where there's a bunch of USDA regulations spelled out by letter and number that plants in the state have to follow. It's very difficult to keep that up to date through the statutory process. We are able to keep it up to date in rule. So in this bill, what it does is, rather than list all those things out, it says federal regulations cited in rule by DAC cap will be essentially enforced. And that allows us to stay where we need to be for that Cooperative Interstate Shipment Program. So that's the alignment piece that Assemblyman Narison talked about. So it's taken care of there. So again, we're very much in support of this bill. The industry is growing, diversifying, you know, a whole lot of products that people never dreamed of 20 years ago are being made. We view our function as a partnership with those businesses, but we're also in partnership with consumers who expect those products to be safe. So our job is to verify that what the plants do in making these processes results in safe products. To be good partners, we do need up-to-date statutes, and they need to be flexible. They need to not impede the industry either now or in the future. So this bill provides that needed flexibility. The first key thing that it does is moves certain types of animals out of one category and puts them in the more run-of-the-mill category that in the, in the statute is called livestock. So there are a lot of different animal species that have become popular for making meat products. Bison is one that we've heard a lot from bison processors and producers, but it could be alpacas, it could be llamas, it could be rabbits. And so right now, the slaughter and processing of those species is under a voluntary, reimbursable, or fee-for-service program. What we're proposing, or what the Act proposes, is to allow us, by rule, to move species into the livestock category, where they get inspection that essentially, other than the license fee and any overtime, it's free. Okay? So we're going from voluntary, reimbursable, fee-for-service, to standard, get a meat license, and that's the last you pay us for that processing. Bison producers and processors, I'm sure, would be very happy about this, because it puts them on a level playing field with the Dakotas and Minnesota, which are the competition. Now, where it get, some people questioning, mentioned something goofy about interstate shipment of bison or some other product. Where this gets a little interesting or complicated is USDA has a list of what they call amendable species. Simple way to think of those is things that were in the old McDonald's song when you were a kid. Okay? Those are amendable species: cows, pigs, chickens, and so on. Bison are not on that list. So that means if we put them on our livestock list, our state-inspected bison products can go anywhere in the U.S. That's a good thing. So that change alone is worth support, I believe. Now, another kind of detailed part here relates to retail food establishments that make meat products, but sell them at retail, not at wholesale. So think of a grocery store that has a meat counter and grinds hamburger and so on. There's a limit for those people for how much of their sales can go to hotels, restaurants, and institutions. Okay? It's a dollar limit, and that limit is in statute, and it's stuck in amber, okay? And what this bill will do is, instead of specifying the amount in the statute, it will simply reference a USDA rule that gives you the amount, the limit, and it's updated every year to allow for inflation and so on. So I think that's, again, a good thing. It's not locking the industry into a limit that's out of date. Assemblyman Narison mentioned the pizzas, and an interesting exemption with that. Again, it's kind of detailed, but there is what is called the Pizza Hut exemption and the Heinemann's exemption, named after businesses, where it was determined by USDA in the past that these people, the retail or restaurant-type businesses, they don't get a, don't have to get a meat plant license, okay? USDA does this already. The bill simply takes that common sense approach and puts it into state law. Also, key thing for the industry, we charge a flat license fee regardless of how complicated or how big or how small the operation is, whether they do only slaughter or they do slaughter and processing regardless of the range of products. And what the bill proposes is that the top-level fee for the license will stay the same, but it'll allow us to break out categories of license fees based on size and complexity. We do this in most of our other food business licenses. And again, it's common sense, and it's a little thing. It helps the smaller plants. So the fees are capped at $200 for your standard, or for the largest, most complicated meat establishment, and $85 for a custom establishment. Okay? So I think we've hit the high points. It's a, this bill helps business, helps the bison producers, and the producers and processors of whatever that next hot species will be. It clarifies a lot of things, gets rid of a lot of obsolete language, uses simpler terms. I urge your support of the bill. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, Mr. Chairman? Senator Veenhout?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You mentioned this really quickly, and I just wanted to clarify it a little bit. On page 15, the bottom of page 15 in section 51, there's some wording changes to the references to horses, mules, and other equine. And, and as you mentioned, horses are not considered part of livestock in this bill. Can you kind of tell me where the status of horse slaughter is now, and kind of what's behind this?
Okay. That is an issue that's being fought at the federal level. I'm trying to remember. It had been allowed, and then it was made not allowed, and then, I believe, the Farm Bill put it back in, but then there was a challenge. There was a plant in New Mexico that was going to start doing horse slaughter. They never got their grant of inspection from USDA. If I recall, it was because of some sort of, it might have been an environmental impact statement or permit. The federal legislative pendulum has swung back so that it's not currently allowed. We have not had anybody come to us asking about this. We just viewed it as an obsolete thing that was redundant in our statute.
Mm-hmm.
So, you know, if there was a dramatic change, you know, we'd look, look at it. Essentially, we try to keep in sync with what the federal laws...
Which is sometimes no small task.
What's that?
Sometimes no small task.
Yeah.
And as far as other states, do they treat it pretty much the same in the Midwest, around us?
Well, the other state inspection programs would be like us. I mean, we take our cue from USDA. I'm not aware of any, you know, movement for horse slaughter in any of the states around us now. I could be ignorant, but I... I could be ignorant, but I just haven't heard of it.
Sure. Yeah, I haven't either. Thank you.
Any other questions from the committee members? See, none? Thank you. Karen. Oh, Karen Gafford from Wisconsin Farm Bureau, registered in favor of the last bill, correct?
Yeah.
Late to add to that one. And Karen also from Gafford from the Wisconsin Farm Bureau, registered in favor of this bill. And Nick George from the Midwest Food Process Association, registered in favor. So that will conclude testimony on this bill. Any questions? Assembly Bill 646, Senate Bill 514, Third Order Business. When I hear testimony and welcome registrations on this bill, this is relating to penalties for violating commercial feed requirements and providing a criminal penalty, or penalty. Representative Narison?
Thank you. Hello again, and I'm here to testify in support of Assembly Bill 646 and the Senate Companion bill of 514. The Department of Agriculture, Trade, and Consumer Protection administers laws regulating commercial animal feed. Currently, violators of commercial animal feed laws are subject to criminal penalties, including a fine up to $200, up to six months in prison or both. Our commercial animal feed laws were last updated in 1979. Today, district attorneys want a civil forfeiture option for minor unintentional violations. This legislation gives district attorneys that option while recognizing that criminal charges can still be brought if there's a strong evidence of intent to violate or defraud or serious harm has been caused. I encourage you to support this legislation, which updates our statutes to bring penalties in line with other programs administered by DacCap, such as the regulation of fertilizer and pesticides. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Senator Moulton?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think it's important to note that this bill does not change the current law that allows for a criminal penalty as long as there's strong evidence of intent to violate or defraud or serious harm that's been caused. Senate Bill 514 and Assembly Bill 646 simply ensure that laws governing commercial feed violations can be applied appropriately in different circumstances. By increasing the department's options to penalize commercial feed violations, these bills improve enforcement and just make it fairer. And so I would ask that you vote to recommend passage of Senate Bill 514 and Assembly Bill 646. Thank you.
Thank you. Any members? Senator Harzdorff?
Yeah, are you aware of what kind of, how many violations are there? Are we having a problem with this, and to what extent?
I think DacCap would maybe be able to answer that because they're coming up after us.
You guys are two for two.
Yep, yep. Better let them explain it than us, so.
Representative Kessler?
The only thing that concerns me a little bit is, first, what's the definition of a manufacturer and a distributor? I guess that isn't clear to me, and I'd have a follow-up for that.
I'm going to have to.
Defer to DacCap?
DacCap, definitely.
Okay. The other thing that is the follow-up on it is my reading of the statute says that you've then made the person who makes the violation, who's the manufacturer-distributor, a felony. And I'm not sure that was the intent of the people to do it, but Section 93960 defines felony and misdemeanor, and basically it says a crime punishable by imprisonment in the Wisconsin state prisons is a felony. Every other crime is a misdemeanor. So you're suddenly creating a situation where a manufacturer or somebody who's violating or distributor is going to lose potentially the right to vote or, you know, have the consequences of a felony conviction. Obviously, some of the members of the Assembly know that this is an issue I've raised in the past of the increasing felony. I didn't expect it in an agricultural bill, but I still felt it might be important to point it out, and maybe that isn't something that the authors intended. They may have wanted to keep it as a misdemeanor and may want to make an amendment to reflect the change on that.
You going to respond to that, Representative Narison?
We'll take a look at it and see if it's something we can do with the bill.
Ledge Council, is that? I wonder if you could.
Went out 93960 of the statute is the.
So with. With regard to the definitions that you asked about, manufacturer is defined as any person who manufactures commercial feed. With regard to penalties under the bill, current law provides for a fine of not more than $200 or imprisonment for not more than six months or both. The penalties for the criminal portion of the bill for the knowing violation would be for either a manufacturer or distributor. The penalty, as you stated, does increase to one year or a fine of $5,000 or both, thus passing the threshold that you mentioned.
Right.
Within the bill, as far as criminal provisions go, there is also a provision for any other person aside from a distributor or a manufacturer who violates that provision, and that provides, the bill provides for a lesser penalty.
Sure, I understand that.
It's for $1,000 or imprisonment for 30 days or both.
Yeah, it just applied to the higher classification, and I wasn't sure that that was really one of the intents of the authors to do that, but it was something that is obviously has something that I have a radar on.
Okay, thank you, Representative Grayke.
Thank you. I would just ask Ledge Council if you could repeat the last. My question was going to be about what you just spoke about. Does the bill create two levels of penalty? One level for a manufacturer or a distributor and a second level of penalty for, quote, what I'm reading, any other person? Could you just explain to the committee who are these two people and what are the differences in the penalties under the bill?
The term "any other person" is not defined within the bill, so presumably the applicability is under the reasonable reading of it, of any other person, who would not be one who would fit within the definition of manufacturer or distributor. And with regard to two different penalty structures, a manufacturer or distributor is subject to the higher penalties of $5,000 or one-year imprisonment or both. Any other person is subject to a fine of $1,000 or imprisonment for not more than 30 days or both.
Thank you for the clarification. As a follow-up to the authors, could you explain for the committee the rationale between, for creating these two different classifications? Why would we treat manufacturers and distributors one way and any other person a different way? What drew you to write the bill that way?
Well, we were looking at, you know, sometimes you just accidentally make a mistake. And normally, when you're a manufacturer, you are under regulations. And usually, when it happens there, it's probably not always mistaken. It's a bigger batch of feed or whatever it is because you're doing a bigger quantity. And if you're any other, you would be a smaller incidental, and we're going to make a variation on that.
Any other questions from the committee members for the authors? Senator Rehnau?
Just a comment to reinforce what Representative Narison said, that a lot of farmers, well, not a lot, but occasionally farmers sell feed to other farmers. And I think this is the primary provision would address farmers selling feed to other farmers, and it would be incident. For example, we sell hay to other farmers, and it's certified organic, and maybe there could be an example where somehow something bad happened to it, and, you know, maybe we knew about it, maybe we didn't, but that's how I would interpret this.
And I appreciate that, just as a follow-up. I'm not necessarily objecting to that, but in our criminal code, we tend to not treat somebody that owns and operates the business different than, you know, we don't necessarily classify crimes if committed by one person differently than if committed by another. In general, we have crimes, and then we let the justice system sort that out, and the degree of their culpability determines the degree of their punishment, not the degree of the business that they own or operate. And so I just wanted to, I respect and understand the rationale that the chairman and the author has given, and I appreciate Senator backing that up. I'm not saying that we should felonize farmers that are selling hay. I certainly would object to that. But I also, in the structure of how we have our criminal code, it's important to me that we not necessarily have certain penalties that apply to an owner or distributor and different for somebody else. So, and I appreciate the rationale, and, you know, as the vote comes up in the future, it'll be something that maybe we can clarify even more. Thanks.
But if you look in the legislation, it gives the district attorneys the option that if they feel it's grievous enough, they can go to the higher penalty. So it is for both. They still have that option as a DA.
Any other questions? All right, and we'll move on. John Petty from DacCap is going to speak in favor of this. And Lori Bowman, sorry about that.
Good morning. I'd like to introduce myself. I'm John Petty. I'm Division Administrator of the Agricultural Resource Management Division at DacCap, and this is Lori Bowman. She's Bureau Chief for Agricultural Chemical Management at DacCap. We are testifying in support of Assembly Bill 646 and Senate Bill 514 relating to penalties for violating commercial feed requirements and providing a criminal penalty. I would like to thank Chairman Narison and Chairman Moulton for introducing this legislation and holding this hearing today. And working with Lori, we will answer some of the questions that were asked.
So to give some background, as stated earlier, current law only allows the agency to use penalty provisions, which is a misdemeanor criminal, for any violation, regardless if it's a record-keeping type of violation, so if it's a minor type of violation or a very egregious violation, distribution of an adulterated feed, commercial feed, for instance. So you would have, we don't take into consideration severity. You only have this one provision, which is it's always a misdemeanor criminal penalty of up to $200. That's the current one, and it's based on the fact that this is a pretty, you know, fairly old law with the penalty provisions. So we regulate commercial animal feed. We regulate, we license manufacturing businesses. So a company who is manufacturing or labeling a commercial feed is going to require it to be a license. That's that definition, and that's how we tie into those, to that section on the provision. The proposed language for penalties mirrors what we have for pesticide penalty provisions. So that's kind of the basis of, as we do in pesticides, we would hold a business to a higher standard in that they can distribute and have a much bigger impact to consumers, to livestock, to the agricultural industry as a whole, including pet food, by the way. So this would also be animal feed that's used for pets. So that's kind of the differentiation, and the basis for this is based on current penalty provisions within the department that we look at. Respect the focus on the criminal penalties. Right now, everyone has misdemeanor criminal, so that's the only option. We, when we take cases to the district attorney's offices for prosecution, they're looking for other options for these minor, non-intentional type of penalties, like the civil penalties, having that provision versus having to charge somebody with a misdemeanor criminal penalty. So we've heard this from DAs. To go to your question as to how many violations do we have, we probably prosecute anywhere from one to five cases in a year, and it's usually more on the one. So we don't have significant penalties, but when we do have cases, we want to have the ability to have an option where we could just handle this civilly, with a civil penalty instead of criminal. This does put a greater onus when you want to prosecute for criminal. That is very intentional. It is intentional or knowing violations. These have to be very egregious before you go into that, hit that benchmark to go into a higher penalty provision. There is a much greater burden of proof that it is intentional to go into that criminal. That is what the, that's kind of the penalty realm we live in in pesticides. Very, very few cases that we come across in any of our programs are knowing and intentional. Most of them are accidental. They are, they're missteps by people that cause a violation. We don't have people out knowingly, intentionally trying to violate any of our regulations, including this particular provision, so this program, so on feed. So we do look at businesses because of impact, and a business that is intentionally or knowingly violating the law as it relates to manufacturing and distributing commercial feed, we would hold them to a higher standard. Other category is somebody who, it's, the example is a good one of there's somebody else in the process. This is not a licensed business. This is not somebody who is doing this, but they have, they have gone into the commercial feed violation, so they've distributed or they've, have an adulterated, let's say they purposely contaminate something. That would be an intentional act. Those people, they're not businesses, while their act is egregious, is probably on a much lower level of impact because it would, they are not commercially distributing. They're not in the business. But again, to go to that criminal penalty, and this proposal is you have to knowingly or intentionally violate. So it's a very high bar to get to.
Any questions, sir? Oh, Representative Kessler, I'm sorry.
Just clarifying that a little bit. I think that I'm going to suggest that you look at the statute a little more clearly because your definition for both the lower criminal penalty and the higher criminal penalty is identical. And I'm not sure that that's going to end up having the effect that you have and may not survive scrutiny by a court. And so possibly you may want to make those changes. I certainly agree that I don't encourage people to prosecute. I would rather see the civil penalty if that's going to be the corrective thing, but if you're going to rely on that, I think you should clarify a little bit, sitting down with Ledge Council and trying to see if you can clarify the differential between the lower $200 to $500 fine or the maximum penalty. The knowingly is identical, and there's no differential in between those.
Representative Vought?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I just would discuss, it's my understanding these bills have been requested by the department in these last four bills. So there's been a whole lot of homework done, a whole lot of stakeholder interplay, if you will, and so on, so that in the bill. What comes to my mind is World Area Expo comes to Wisconsin, and every feed manufacturer across the country comes to World Area Expo because we have a strong industry. And I don't know if I'm really curious on if you've had episodes from, because of that, I mean, oh, how could I say it? You have, what are some of your episodes of violation? Maybe that would be a better way. And is it, does it come from the manufacturer, or does it come from all these guys that come in with a product they're selling, and they make promises that are above and beyond? Or, you know, and I'm thinking about a case where, or a situation, and I know that a lot of folks put in antibiotics almost routinely, for example, doctor. And I know that there's been some concern about the, you know, creating an immunity and stuff and all that stuff. Well, how do you play into that as a department? How do you police stuff like that? I guess it's just my question.
Okay, so types of violations. So there are record-keeping requirements for a company. So if you want to distribute, manufacture and distribute, if you're a feed mill and you're going to, you have customers come in, they place orders, you may have some stock that you have, you have a brand that you bag up and you can go in and purchase. We regulate, and the types of things that we're looking at is what you say that's on the bag. When you go to the grocery store and you buy a bag of dog food, what it says. When you go to the grocery store and you buy a bag of dog food, what it says on that label for percent protein, percent, you know, crude fat, fiber, all of those things, what it says on that bag, it's the truth in labeling. It has to be correct. The ingredients are in there, it's on the label, what you say is in the bag is really in the bag, so.
Whether they're manufactured in Wisconsin or Iowa.
Correct, correct, that is absolutely true. So, we also look at companies who, you bring up antibiotics, which is a good one. So, a lot of medication for animals, particularly livestock, is primarily livestock, is best administered and easiest to administer through feed. So, a feed mill will manufacture a product for a producer, and it will have, it could have medication in it. So, that medication, it's required to be an approved use, and the concentration is all done at a federal level by FDA. They do all of those approvals. We will go in and make sure that it is that percentage in the bag. So we will actually analyze quality control checks to make sure that it is being used for the right purposes, that there's proper labeling. If you handle drugs as a feed mill, you have to have an inventory, so we would be checking to make sure that your, your books balance, so you know how much products you have and how much you've used, so you have an actual medication inventory. So those are the types of things. We go in and inspect these facilities to make sure that they are clean, that they are, they don't have any introduction of adulterants, like through, if you have mouse control, I mean, these are, these places have a lot of really tasty things for critters. So you'd, we go in to inspect those facilities, so that's the type of things that would come to us. Or a complaint, you mismanufacture. The most common types of complaints are, you grabbed the wrong medication accidentally as a feed mill, and instead of a low dose, you accidentally put the more concentrated drug into that mix, and now there's an implication to herd health. So you've, now your dairy cows are off, their milk production has dropped, they're off feed, so we would go in and investigate those types of cases. And those would be examples of, very frequently, we'll get concerns or complaints from a consumer that says, "My dog or cat is sick, it could be the feed," so we'll go in and investigate if it is the feed, or if there's a livestock issue. So, those would be typical types of cases for us. The World Area Expo, those people may be trying to sell their product, it's once they're sale, it's not the event itself necessarily, but once you are manufacturing and distributing, we're making sure that they meet all of the requirements of our state regulations for being able to, the label is truthful and honest, they're not making exaggerated claims saying this is a magic thing.
Are you getting into some of the biotech stuff too, or is that totally off the scale from, you know?
When you say biotech.
Talking about all the biotechnology stuff, the bugs and the...
We do, we do regulate those if they're, if they have, so if you have a product that has kind of those micronutrients and the things that will, the yeasts and all of those other little critters.
All those things, the probiotics for, you know, when we take probiotics, it says so many million or whatever. You guys get into all that stuff too?
So, we do regulate. So, at the federal level, feed is a little bit different than, animal feed is different than human food. You have food, so you have a feed product, it's nutritional, or you have a drug. There isn't a supplement category in animal feed, so that's different than human food. So you either are, if it's a drug and you're making a drug claim, it needs to be registered, approved use by FDA, and FDA will say, "These doses for these species," and you must follow that. So we would then go in, we actually do contract work for FDA to look at those facilities that are licensed facilities that handle certain types of drugs, but we do those under contract for the feds, so for FDA.
Good, thank you.
Otherwise, we regulate the other products.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Representative Grayke?
Thank you. I would imagine that a number of the manufacturers or distributors are corporations. How do you criminally charge a corporate entity and who goes to jail under the criminal penalties? And you've referenced the pesticides and the similar penalty structures, so could you give us an example of a pesticide manufacturer that you have criminally prosecuted? Who from that manufacturer was held criminally liable, and who goes to jail, I guess is the question?
We have never, I've been to, at the department, doing enforcement work for 19 years, and we've never had anyone go to jail. It's not a provision, because we have, we've had, there have been, I'm trying to think if we've had a criminal, it is rarely used to have criminal. It's a nice tool to have in your toolbox, but again, we don't have experiences with people intentionally going out and trying to violate these, violate our laws. We've never, we've never ever used, even with what we have on current books for feed, we've never used jail time or imprisonment. There have been penalties that have been assessed, but I'm trying to think of the last time we would have even used the criminal, knowing criminal with even pesticides. Again, we are, we have a very compliant industry. They are not willfully going out and trying to violate.
I would mention that we have other tools at our disposal. We can order a stop sale of product, we can work with FDA and have a recall of product, and we can conditionalize or revoke a license, and that tends to get people's attention.
Sure, you're hitting them in the bottom line, and I imagine they rectify, well, why should we double the penalty if you've never used it? No, that's a question, I mean, it was pointed out that these are agency requests. If you've never used it in 19 years, why should we double the penalty?
The, what we are trying to do is get, primary goal here is to be, from our perspective, from an enforcement program, is to be able to have a civil penalty provision, and to have the deterrent, if we ever needed it, there is a deterrent there on the criminal. Now, because we haven't used it, could there be a situation in the future where we would need to use it? I can't say yes or no. I'm very hopeful that we never have to use criminal penalties, because we should never have a situation. But if we ever needed it, we have that tool available for the severity of the case. And what we really are trying to do is align it to the types of penalties that we have for other programs, such as pesticides and fertilizer. If you violate the fertilizer regulations, you have these types of penalty provisions in these, in these dollar amounts. We think that animal feed, if you have a violation of animal feed and you're contaminating a herd, or, and impacting a farm in that situation, or pets on a broad scale, I think people may still remember the melamine from China that came in, in pet food, and the impact that that had nationally on pet owners. In those situations, we feel that commercial animal feed is just as important as, and should have a similar bottom line as fertilizer, if you violate fertilizer regulations or the pesticides. They shouldn't have a lesser standard.
Any other questions from any of the committee members? All right, thank you very much. I have John Mansky with the Cooperative Network registering in favor, Tom Bresner with the Wisconsin Agribusiness Association, registering in favor, and Karen Gafford, Wisconsin Farm Bureau, registering in favor. Thank you very much. Our fourth order of business is Assembly Bill 675, Senate Bill 549.
I have no questions, you don't have to worry.
We will now hear testimony again from, one more time, and anyone that is welcome to register on this bill. This bill is relating to agriculture loan guarantee programs administered by, administered by the Wisconsin Housing and Economic Development Authority. Representative?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and committee members. I'm here in support of Assembly Bill 675 and the Senate Companion Bill 549, which we authoring this legislation to modernize the statute pertaining to several agricultural loan guarantee programs administered by the Wisconsin Housing and Economic Development Authority. Some of the key points of the legislation are that it extends the agricultural production drought assistance loan guarantee program indefinitely, and adds for any act of nature for which a governor issues a disaster declaration, not just for a drought, increases loan amounts to reflect current market conditions, assists repayment by giving WIDA the flexibility to waive origination fees and change current limitations on the amount extended to reflect current agricultural pricing structures, and it preserves family farms by giving WIDA the flexibility to waive an origination fee for farm assets reinvestment management loan. And I encourage you to support this legislation, which updates our statutes to reflect the modern agricultural lending needs, and it helps farmers recover from any, from any weather disaster. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Senator?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As Representative Neerson pointed out, I think one of the important parts of this bill is, is the update to the agricultural production drought assistance program, by expanding this to include loans for costs related to any act of nature for which the governor issues a declaration of disaster. For example, this bill, if this bill had been passed before spring of 2015, this program could have been used to help ginseng farmers in central Wisconsin who were greatly impacted by a late freeze, and floods and tornadoes would also be included. So it makes sense for us to extend this successful program to cover all natural disasters. And the bill basically revises outdated financial requirements for many of their loan programs. This is, these programs, these loan programs are such a valuable tool to farmers, and with these revisions, it will make them much more effective in use by the farmer and community. Thank you.
Any questions for the authors? All right. And registering in favor is Mary McCoshen from WIDA, Brian Deick from Wisconsin Independent Business, and John Mansky from Cooperative Network. So that concludes today's public hearings on Assembly Bill 645, 644, 646, and 675 and their companion Senate bills. I'll turn it back to the chairman. Glad to see you.
Thank you. At this time, I will conclude our assembly public hearing. And just for your knowledge, our next regular scheduled meeting date is the 26th of January, on Tuesday, and I am planning on having a hearing that day for the exec on these bills, and there are a couple more in committee now that we finally got these are the first bills we've had all set in committee. So, as of right now, we're planning on it for the 26th, and we'll give more information to you as it comes out. If there's nothing more, we'll turn it over to the Senate. We'll adjourn our assembly public hearing, and we'll turn it over to the Senate.
Well, I would just say we'll adjourn the joint hearing. Senate committee members, we will have our public hearing following this. We'll give everyone a chance to clear the room, and then we will have our public hearing.
We were getting, it was just too weird of a request.